Excuse me, sir. Yes.
Is anybody in an agenda? There's people that are coming late. Make sure your electronic devices are turned off.
I want us to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, August the 8th, 2013, 7:00 P.M. Our invocation tonight will be by Pastor Avila, the United Methodist Church. His new two floors also welcome.
What's that?
He was thinking of Bill.
Let us support you. Grace has got to be thanking for this day. Send us some rain. We pray, gracious God, for all those in our community that suffered from the heat. We pray, dear God, for all those who desire work and aren't able to have it. We pray for those, dear God, who have victories in their life and are good stewards of those victories with others. We thank you, your Lord, for sending us leaders and we pray, dear God, that your spirit may be upon them to bless them and to guide them and to empower them. We, all of us, part of this community, may we do our part in bringing about your kingdom and mercy. In Jesus' name.
Thank you. We have established a quorum. Councilman Maroni, Councilman Gareto, Councilman Volegus. Now, gentlemen, will please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the flag of flag.
This is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, a one state, united, one indivisible.
Okay, at this time, do we have any citizens' comments?
Would you, Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Evans?
I'll defer to you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm a follower of one old lady after her birthday, a lady called me very sad, Jessie Jackson. And she didn't really love my mother. But anyway, she would go up to graveyard, she'd go out past tree and turn left. And just stood right on the block up. But surely, I would say it's kind of the advantage because it's a fence and watering and things like that. But, you know, if you have a chance to look at it and find, we can talk about that.
Mr. Russell, for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
This is for City Manager Jocelyn, who's been a big influence on all of us as officers, certainly. And as a association, we appreciate all your efforts and your commitment to us over the years. This is a plaque we've done for you in appreciation. With deepest appreciation, we are continued support, guidance, and assistance. Members of the Board of Police Officers Associations, Officers of Superior Righteous. You have truly made a difference in our lives and in the lives of those we serve.
Okay, at this time, do we have any other citizens' comments? If not, we're going to go on to O Business, which is item 1A, consideration in action to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting, July 25th, 2013.
May I only approve minutes from regular meeting, July 25th, 2013?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Gareto. May I have a second? Second by Councilman Volegus, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries, three zero. Now, in the second one, which is item 1B, consideration in action to approve minutes from special council meeting 1, 2013. I'm going to ask that we take no action because these are not ready at this time. They will be presented at the next council meeting. So can I have a motion to table?
May I have a motion to table to approve minutes from special council meeting 1, 2013?
May I have a second?
That's it.
Got a motion by Councilman Gareto, second by Councilman Volegus, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries, three zero. Now, we're going to go on to presentation, employee of the month. Since July 2013, we also are going to present August of 2013.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and citizens in attendance. July 2013 Employee of the Month is Hector Ibarra. Hector has been a team member since December 2001. Hector was nominated for this honor by his supervisor, Rudy Vasquez. Rudy described Hector as a very knowledgeable and solid employee. Hector is first in all heavy equipment operations required to maintain and construct roadways within the city limits of our community. I've had the privilege of observing the quality of work that Hector is able to perform. His ability to maneuver large machinery with such precision and accuracy is truly an artistry. For this, we applaud Hector Ibarra. I'm applauding. We will move on to our August 2013 Employee of the Month. Mayor, Council, and citizens, our Employee of the Month for August is Laura Fagans. In the short time that Laura has been part of our management team, financial reporting, accounting process, and public confidence has improved tremendously. Laura's track record of correcting issues and implementing Satorx related to municipal finances has laid a solid foundation for this council and administration, as well as future councils and city managers. We all appreciate the time she spends reviewing documents and answering questions with individual council members, board members, city staff, and citizens. Her level of professionalism is clearly displayed in the job she does for the greater good. We typically give a certificate and a gift certificate that the council has approved and the citizens through the budget process. I additionally got Laura something that she has made my few last few months so much easier because she's taken on a lot of stuff that I was having to deal with. A round of applause for Laura.
Okay, now, we're going to go on to New Business, A, consideration in action to approve the proclamation for the Florisville South Texas Tigers.
Citizens, I want to introduce the Florisville South Texas Tigers. Their select team has been here for four years. We have, this team was put together in April 2009. But several boys here in Florisville are very serious about playing baseball, playing serious baseball. Coach Eric Gavino, who's a head coach, decided to put the team together. We had tryouts at Circle Park Church and picked up some boys that had some talent. Then we went from there and played at Southeast Pony League where the twinkle team started winning quickly. We started playing tournaments there, which we run once, several tournaments in the southeast. Then we went to Southwest and continued to play there. At that time, Coach Eric, myself, and Nate Perry decided to move the team just to play tournament play, to play competitive, all competitive play. But during the year, players moved on, coaches moved on. But Coach Eric has a good eye for skilled players. He went ahead and recruited excellent, excellent players. Hugo Peña, Brian Sanchez, Jacob Santos, Gregory Santos, Janu, San Antonio, and Angel Villanueva, who joined the team. But we had our core players, you know. And those core players have been with the team four years, have not let go, and have been very dedicated and want to play the game. These young men are from Florisville. Eric Tiger Gareto, Ashton Valentes, Mark Asensio, Corey Felix, and Nathaniel Benavides. These players are not selfish players. Teamtime Eric brings good players in, we welcome them in, and they join, and they play their ball. On July 25th, 2013, we were in a tournament up in Round Rock for the World Championship Super Series. This team that I'm about to present battled very hard and won the world championship with a six-and-one record. They ended up playing in the El Diamond Express Stadium. That's what's going on. This is a big dream for these boys. They won the championship, they won it silently, thirteen-five. They won the ring, and brought those rings to Florida. I would like to introduce the players right now. Seeing who we are. Adrian. Mark Asensio. Mark is one of the players that has not left his team. And the next boys coming after him are the same. Ashton Valentes. Nathaniel Benavides. Corey Felix. Eric Tiger Gareto. Anthony Lucio. Angel Medina. Hugo Peña. Jason Manillo. Brian Sanchez, who was the MVP of the championship series. Jacob Santos, who won the home run derby at the championship series. And Xavier Santos. These citizens are your Florisville South Texas Tigers, Super Series World Champions 2013. And I'll introduce the coaches. Head coach and manager, Eric Gareto. Coach Ben Santos. And myself. This is the team that has won it for once and brought the ring back home to Florisville.
Let's see those rings, we go around.
Straighten out the banner. Yeah, hold out your trophy, those of you that are holding trophy, hold them out, work for it.
Hold the whole recording.
One, two, three, one, two, three. One last word. I just want to thank the parents and these players for putting up all the times that we've gone to Brighton, been on the road, been jumping from hotel to hotel. I should say, parents, thank you very much.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the master. We're going to hear the confirmation. We're asked in recognition of a six-one playoff season and the hard work and dedication of all the players, coaches, and parents. We're asked that Florisville South Texas Tigers, under fourteen minor division sports, played in the World Championship Super Series Tournament, July 20th through 25th, 2013. We're asked, the city of Florisville is very proud to be a part of the baseball community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor De Anagasa, by the virtue of the authority vested in me to do, hereby proclaim in honor of the 2013 world champion, South Texas Tigers, witness my hand and seal, the city of Florisville, on this eighth date of August. Okay, Coach, you will come out, we'll give you your card. If I can have a motion to approve the proclamation?
I make the motion to approve the proclamation.
In a second?
For the Florisville South Texas Tigers.
I have a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, three zero.
Congratulations to all the kids that worked hard and keep doing their job. Thank you, try to be a good parent. So congratulations.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, now, we're going to go back to item 2B, which is permanency project update. What is it sending?
Mayor, Council, what I have here is a rough, a very rough draft. My stuff will be able to get all the information about the city of Florisville here. And what I can put on there is what they offer for maintenance. And some of the worksheets, you'll see that. I'm not too, Excel is my favorite thing, so please. But if you look on the page where it says new fees. See, that's how much work, that's how many, how much information I was given. On new fees, what we are wanting to propose to add is a fence permit on there, a demolition permit, and a fair to obtain permits. A fire sprinkler permit, fire alarm permit. That's what we want to add, an addition. Now, that's just on the building portion, that's not including the planning and development part, because we, that's a whole new, that's a whole added animal to that. And then, if you go to the next page where it says proposed fees, that's what I have come up with, looking at what other cities had, kind of in comparison, and kind of seeing what the demographics of the population is. So I kind of threw those numbers in there. So this is just the first go-around, this is very rough, this is just kind of an idea what we're looking at. And if you could see, we're adding a cost for the fence permits, what we're looking at is a residential and a commercial. Increasing the gas test inspection permits, manufacturer home placement, looking to increase that. Your re-inspect fees, looking to increase that. Adding, we don't, we do not have a sign billboard permits, I'm looking to adding that in there. Sign, pedestal monument, and poles. Signs for refacing, that, and even temporary signs, we don't have permits for that. We doing the swimming pool permits, plumbing permits, and actually kind of simplifying that portion of the plumbing permits they like. Increasing the fees for the driveway lat work, in your account. The fees that are, we're looking at to increase is about twenty-five percent of what we have now, that we possess. And then, since we do not have a certified plumbing inspector or planer viewers, we still have to use Bureau Veritas to do those services for us. So what we're using, what on the next page, what I did is on the, where it says proposed fees, if we integrate their services and adding what our cost would be with that also. In other words, this is what they suggested we should have our fees established by using them. So, just, you know, this is just very rough, this is for your review, just to look at. If you have any questions, please get, I wouldn't like to say get with Andy, but I guess with whoever's going to be there, and of course with Sherri, and, you know, I'd be more than welcome to. I'm still, we're still working on it, I still need to get with Laura actually, just to kind of have her look through it as well, but this is very rough, this is just the beginning. But I wanted you to speak the work that Monica has done to get all that to you, and where we're looking at to go as well.
On the percentage, how much? Like this one here, I can't really see because the letter is too small. I think so reading that, I think, but I can't really tell, but I read one here that says seventy-five dollars for each fixture plug.
Scene.
Seventy-five cents for each one in a house?
Some cities, that's how they charge. They charge by, each fixture, each plug, I mean, each little pizza. But those cities have their own inspector, you know, where they can go in there.
But where does it fit to where? Say, right now, we're charging to, for a house, if it has a hundred plugs, then there's going to be a hundred dollars?
We just base our price per footage.
Okay, and versus, I would just like to know what's the amount of the increase? Okay. And versus, I would just like to know what's the amount of the increase to something new like this. I mean, it's good to look at and to, to try to bring revenue, but at the same time.
We don't want to make a big hit, exactly.
Yeah. And, and I want to compare, you know, if we're charging fifty dollars for a permit, and then now you're going to charge two hundred dollars because they have two hundred plugs, plus. That's kind of where it's.
But we also need to look at the services we have to pay out to this company to do our.
I understand. That's what I'm saying, to, to put. And that's kind of what, I mean, I haven't really looked at it, but if I look at it, maybe see here, and if not, if we can get that information to compare. Because I would like to compare, I would want to do a permit from a hundred dollars to go to four hundred.
I'm hoping that the next go around, that we come back with this, it'll be more simple. I'm just going to, I'm just showing what other cities I would. That's what you're looking at. And when I come back again, it'll be more simple, showing what you're talking about, like what was, what's the difference from what we're doing now to what we want to do.
That's what I would like to see, because I mean, seventy-five cents for each plug.
I have a question also. I know we use the Bureau now.
Bureau Veritas.
Okay. Now, is there any reason why we can't use local people, like plumbers and electricians? Is there something that says we can't?
Well.
Is, is it cheaper to hire on someone full-time that can do that in comparison to, to hiring, hiring off Bureau Veritas? I know they do all the reviews and, of the plans and so forth, but you know, such as inspections, interludes, and, you know, somebody qualified that, that could, that could do these inspections and probably shave a lot of cost off of these, of some of the permits. One of my main concerns is the difference in the, the fire alarms, fire sprinkler, fire permits, you know. I, I, you know, in just looking at them from, from right now for, from all the other cities, you know, that's, that's a substantial difference, you know, just because you have to, to hire outside, you know, as such, from Bureau Veritas. Have you looked at any other options?
The thing is, the last compliance officer we had was back in 2006. And the one after that was the director of public works who was doing those type of inspections. The thing is, with fires, especially with the fire management, by state, you have to be licensed. They had just passed this law, I believe it was last year. You have to be licensed to review plans and to do those inspections. So.
Which is basically a fire marshal.
Yes.
And, so what, I mean, is, is, is it eas, would it be easier for us to send the fire marshal just to, to review these plans and, and?
Well, you're looking at a whole new body, a whole new employee, and you're looking at the budget, and that's something that's in Laura's court, the city manager.
I just curious if it, if it's been looked into a little bit, you know, because, I don't know, it, it's important.
Yes.
That, that we, can we look at all avenues, because you definitely don't want to deter any new construction away from Florisville. Especially whenever you're comparing it to places like Pleasant that are, that are booming areas as well, you know, such as the Eagle Ford.
See, you've got the city of Pleasant, they have their in-house inspectors and an engineer who can actually verify those foundation plans.
Correct.
Whereas we don't.
Correct. But, you know, again, you know, you, and I, I would, I would kind of, I would suggest, you know, maybe looking into it, you know, to see what is, what's it going to cost, you know, what, or what's the cost comparison as to hiring somebody in-house on staff, you know, because I know even some of the inspections, they call in right away for the, uh, for electrical, for instance. You know, they, you call them in and, and you gotta wait the twenty-four hours. And when, sometimes the, the houses are, you know, they, they need to be lived in, basically, you know, to have people living in them, children, whatever they be. You know, perhaps hire somebody on full-time that should call them up on, on, you know, during the hours and have them go do it.
And that's where we have to look at the budget, and I have to get with Laura and our city manager at the time. Yeah, definitely, we could probably put all that in there.
And an answer to my question would be?
I'm sorry, who is it?
What I wanted to know was, can we share some of that business with our local? Like our local electricians, our local plumbers, your master plumbers?
Your plumber inspector by state, this is mandated by state, he has to be a certified plumbing inspector, not a master plumber. Unless that master plumber has that certificate, he can instead. Your electrical and your HVAC, it could actually be someone who has knowledge of the field, but there's not no state mandate going for that. So, but the plumbers, yes.
We could research and find out, you know, we could keep some of the dollars, I mean. And I think the county visit, the county inspector that does the, like the fire marshal.
Well, that's a human factor. He's a fire marshal. He'll do those inspections.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, now we're going to go back on to new business, new reporting. B, consideration in action to receive the effective tax rate and rollback rate calculation. Laura?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. This is just a, pretty much just kind of basic formality. The, we received, we received a certification of the appraisal role, July 25th, from the appraisal district. And the, I'm going to just read this, put one number on here. The 2013 certified taxable value is unadjusted, two hundred eighty-five million, two hundred four thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine. And then on August 6th, the effective rate and rollback rate calculation were performed by his, by the appraisal district officer, Brian Stahl. The, this is not a big newspaper, so, actually, almost that big of a newspaper. So this will be going in the newspaper on Wednesday, the. This is, and this calculation shows, yeah, that you're effective. Your rollback rate shows your statement, whether it considers statement of increase and decrease, and what death service payments you have to pay. The actual notice itself for the, the justice tax base, effective calculated, our rate type, two hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred two million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-six. So you can see, we talked about this in the budget workshop, the effective rate and the rollback rate. The calculation, the effective rate is point three one five seven, the rollback rate is one three two three three, which is also the same tax rate as when the city manager proposed budgets at this time. And there will be, once this publication happens, and actually that same night, that same evening, that you're going to, next, the next night should be after the publication, you're going to be discussing the tax rate and schedule public gearing for the future. Read the paper. Now.
Any questions, Council? Would that kind of option?
Mayor, I would like to receive the effective tax rate and rollback rate calculation.
Okay, Mayor, have a second. Okay, have a motion by Councilman Guedel, second by Councilwoman Guleika, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Three wins. Thank you, Laura. Now we're going to go on to consideration in action to approve contract funds and fees collection services with one partner, Golden Glare, L L P. Andy?
Sure, Congress, it'll be handled with this one here, and just introducing the program again.
Mayor, Council, we have our representatives on my line to answer questions again tonight. We did send you some information that the judge gave us some of our numbers attached to the information we sent with the contract. With also some information sent by LimeBardner, they gave cities that are likewise in our tribe and return rate that they have on this product. So I'll let them talk to me and answer any questions that they have.
Good evening, Mayor, staff, and citizens. My name is Jeff Garcia. I'm an attorney at the law firm of LimeBardner and Goggin. And we were here roughly a month ago, trying to get this, essentially what it is, is dealing with municipal court and traffic citations. And what it deals with is whenever somebody is issued a traffic citation, and the individual ignores the court order to appear before the judge to either plead guilty or not guilty for the case and resolve the case, they completely ignore the summons of the, of the ticket and do not appear before the judge. What this law allowed in 2003 to qualify tax election section was to add on a thirty percent add-on fee to these cases, to allow collection agencies such as our offer to be able to add on a thirty percent collection fee to that citation amount, to be able to go and track down the defendants that are forward to the court summons. And essentially what you have before you tonight is, is number one, being able to prove the ordinance that would add on that thirty percent fee. And number two, approve the contract with our law firm, law firm, should you approve that contract. The thirty percent add-on fee does not take anything away from the city. It is an add-on fee. The defendant pays for it. And the second part behind that add-on fee is that the judge and municipal court retain complete control of whether or not to assess that add-on fee or not. All we merely do is, we're merely a tool for the city to be able to go out there, use our resources that we have throughout the state, the United States, to be able to track down individuals, send them a letter, give them a phone call, get them into the actual municipal court to be able to take care of the ticket. Now, and once we get that particular defendant to the court, every month we send a invoice to the court saying, these are the cases that we resolve. Can you go ahead and just look over them and make sure whether or not they're going to be assessed a third percent? At that point, once the, the court approves of whatever cases get add-on, the third percent, that's how we get paid. The judge retains complete control of everything, and that is the main point behind the add-on fee. Last time we were here, essentially, we put this issue on pause for three reasons. Number one, the ordinance needs to be published, according to the city attorney. Number two, the council wanted to proceed stats on exactly how many outstanding accounts are out there. And number three, the council wanted to see some stats as far as, trying to figure out more or less what kind of percentage collection would be, the council could be expecting from our collection firm. And all those, all that information should have been provided to you in the council packets. The, my understanding is the municipal court has provided the, the numbers on as far as how many accounts are outstanding or that they could consider, they'll be considered eligible to be turned over to our law firm. And number three, the, the stats as far as getting other types of cities and collection rates examples have been provided. If you take a look at those numbers, essentially, it varies. As, as I stated previously, it essentially depends on how old the account that is turned over to us, depends on what's going to be the collection rate. The older the accounts, of course, the harder it is to track down somebody and actually get them to come and pay. And so when you're looking at older accounts, you're going to see a lower collection rate than you would say a, a count that just got turned over to us. It just turned, say, for example, sixty-one days old. So if you take a look at those examples of those cities, for the most part, what you see is the initial batch that is turned over to a law firm, you'll see a big collection rate because what they're doing is handing over everything. There's those notes to the city. And what we're doing is going in and collecting a large amount. What you see is after three years, that rate will start to taper off. But for the most part, it will average around thirty percent of what you see is the return on outstanding citations and cases that are involved with the municipal court. So with that, I'll turn it over. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
The only thing is, if, if you collect, only if you collect, you get the thirty percent, right? Or is the judge going to be able to say, okay, I'm going to give you thirty, more than thirty percent?
No. We can collect, and if the, if the municipal court collects the money, it is not until Judge Garzina says, okay, LimeBardner, yes, you did collect this, and I'm assessing that thirty percent, and we're going to return that money back. So, again, judge retains complete control of that thirty percent add-on fee. Because there's cases out there dealing with, it's easy to see, and it's always up to the judge to decide who qualifies for, for that, and whether or not they should add on that thirty percent. There's other scenarios that pop up. Sometimes a lot of defendants will give us a call. They start talking to somebody in our call center, what they, they may have, for example, a tendency bankruptcy. They think, for example, that the criminal case could be taken care of, but bankruptcy, it doesn't. So what they do is they ask for to speak to the attorney. What happens once that person asks for that, me being the attorney in charge of the account, they never send me the message to my office. I return the phone call to the defendant and explain to them, or hear their situation, and then explain to them, look, we're simply trying to collect. You really need to go before the judge, and that is where you're going to resolve your case. And that's where the thirty percent add-on fee is taken care of at that point.
Do you, at that point, do you give them, say, their, their, or their, their fees of a thousand dollars? Do you tell them it's going to be, that it could possibly be a thousand dollars plus thirty percent?
Yes. What we do is we tell them, look, you either have one citation or three, however it may be, the amount of those citations, and then say, look, with the add-on fee, it is this much. Just the citations are this much. Everything is broken down for the defendant. But based on the way the city wants to do it, which is have the defendant come to the actual municipal court and take care of it. At that point, the defendant will come to municipal court, take care of the ticket, and depending on what Judge Garzina, he had to determine what it might be, will have an add-on fee or it won't have an add-on fee.
So you can possibly bring somebody to the court, and that, that had, that was outstanding, and not get you thirty percent?
Yes. There, there, every time a large amount of accounts are handed over, so there's a large amount. There's always going to be those cases where for some reason it wouldn't go in clear, and so they'll get the better initially. And there's going to be, there will always be those scenarios where we'll get ahold of somebody, but then they'll come to the court, address it, take care of it, and it turns out that that thirty percent add-on fee's never even assessed to them.
And that thirty percent is negotiable, like to, to say that the add-on fee can be fifteen percent or?
The way the statute reads, it says a thirty percent add-on fee. They would say about two, so the thirty percent is not negotiable. It's either thirty percent or nothing. That's the way the statute currently reads.
But the judge, I think, comes here, and she's going to say, there's a thirty percent add-on and pay you.
Yes, but in addition to the other citation amounts, yes.
They're not going to court the city anything?
No, it's actually, no cost to the city. In fact, we are also providing for the hookup software, which your software provider, Anna Panco, who will actually be providing for the, the money to pay for the hookup, so to speak, with the, your software provider, our offer. It normally costs around two thousand dollars. We'll actually be providing that to the city as part of our services. So no cost to the city.
A real win situation.
And have the numbers changed or the, since the last time you've come?
No.
So we're, we're still at about three hundred thousand?
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Rosenber, you already, you, you all reviewed the, the contract and everything.
It says we have, it's going to be an experiment, set for a two-year term, and we recommend its approval, but there are going to be some bumps. It's a new term.
Your recommendation is good to conduct.
And customer support, we manage that. Judge Garcia, Judge Medina has, has some issues that, you know, that y'all's communication is, does, you all have an open line of communication?
Yes, actually, every time we establish a new client, for people, the city will actually be assigned what we call a contract manager, which you'll be sticking with directly on a daily basis, and they handle everything from software issues to actually receiving accounts from the city. So as far as customer service, you'll be, be talking to somebody on a daily basis, and who we, we're assigned a contract manager. So on top of that, I would. So, on top of that, I will receive the entire contract, and if she needs to, she can always contact me, and I will always take care of any issues that they may have.
Are there any unexpected fees that could possibly turn up?
Other than the fee it takes for to be able to provide to look up to Anco, there are no other expected...
Which y'all are accepting that?
Yeah, we're accepting that, and we'll care for that. It's just a matter of, essentially, how fast we can get to the different IT departments, especially Anco. There's initial debate in that, because they want to make sure they have the contract and the permit from the client to be able to allow us, which would be an outside third-party vendor, to hook up to them. And so that takes roughly a month. Worst-case scenario, we're talking two months down the road, when everything would be completely hooked up, and working the two, the city and the law firm, talking both, sending files and collecting. And the fastest, I would say, is about thirty days.
Mayor, if we look at paragraph six, the recommendation is to be effective, and continue on until 2013. And I think the judge wants to go ahead and do startup on it, because the administrative startup will take a couple months to really put in.
At this, at this point, you don't have a secretary, correct, or anyone that would be helping with some of these, or with the collections, or gathering the mud to, to...
Present it. Right now, we're in the process of hiring.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract fees and fines and fees, collection services with Lime...